It's seven o'clock on March 8, 2021, and I asked the clerk to please call the roll.
Good evening, Councilmember Bets.
Good evening, President participating remotely from Richmond, Virginia.
Councilmember Dunbar.
President participating remotely from South Lansing.
I'm here and I'm participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Hussein.
President participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Jackson.
President participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Spatafor.
President participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Spitzley, Councilmember Wood.
President and participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
There are seven members present in the forum, Councilmember Spitzley is absent, and we are to the meditation and pledge of allegiance.
Thank you. Is there anybody that council would like us, or council, or mayor, or clerk would like to have us keep in our thoughts as we meditate this evening? Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you. Just thoughts and prayers, the young man that was shot and killed on March 6th, the young teenager, and prayers and condolences to the family and friends who knew him. Nobody should have to die by a gun, and we pray that their family seeks peace and recovery. And that's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Garza, did I see your hand?
Yes, I too wanted to keep the Lopez family in prayers as they move forward in this tragic development that happened with their family.
Very good. Thank you. So as we reflect this evening, please keep the Lopez family in your thoughts. Do I need a moment of trial meditation, please? Thank you. Pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay.
Do you have your approval of the council proceedings of February 22nd?
Vice President.
Sure, I would move the meeting minutes of February 22nd.
There's been a motion for us. Is there any discussion on the proceedings? Sing non, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson. Yes. Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Bets.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Many zero nays, the proceedings are approved and we are to community, I'm sorry. Somehow our agenda got out of order. We're two comments by councilmembers and city clerk.
All right, we'll make it up as we go. Councilmembers, are there any comments from councilmembers? Sing non, city clerk. Oh, sorry, Vice President Hussein.
I'm sorry, I was looking for my mute, but President Spatafor. Just a quick, just a quick comment, and then I'd like the mayor to look into something for, you know, for southwest Lansing, for the Churchill Downs neighborhood. I visited with the Churchill Downs neighborhood a few weeks back. They had started up their meetings again virtually, and they, you know, as always, had a fantastic turnout. So there was just great conversation, a lot of discussion about, you know, what they're looking to do this spring and summer to move their neighborhood forward, a reflection kind of on some of the things that they've been able to do over the past several years to move their neighborhood forward, and to make sure that, you know, it's a, it's a great place for, for folks to live. But then there were some concerns that were shared as well, and I know we'll discuss some of the concerns that they have with one of our agenda items a little bit later, so I won't touch on that. But I did want to talk about a blighted building at 2206 West Jolly. So this is on the northwest corner of Pleasant Grove and Jolly, okay? It's a kitty corner to Fire Station 6. This is a property that I've been advocated, I mean, it is an absolute blighted building and a blight on that neighborhood as well as that corridor, and this is a building that I've been advocating for in terms of it's demolishing, if you will, dating back to about 2017. As a matter of fact, the first show cause Make Safe or Demolish letter on this building went out, I believe it was January of 2018. And so we, meaning myself, the neighbors in that area, were ecstatic. We thought, you know, we would see some headway with regards to this problem. Unfortunately, through 2018, through in 2019, we saw no movement. I advocated, obviously, and worked with the building safety manager, worked with economic development and planning, and there's just been one reason or another, you know, that, that we haven't moved forward with the Make Safe or Demolish process and actually getting this building down. And so when I say, I should have said 2018, 19, and 20, I've been working on this with very little success. And so I made sure that that neighborhood knew I would address this as part of this council meeting, that I would officially, Mayor Shore, put this in, in your lap, because again, this is something that we, for one reason or another, have not been able to achieve any measure of success on, but it is an absolute headache for all in that area. So we'd like to see, if possible, some forward movement on that. So again, let me give you that address one more time. It's 2206 West Jolly.
Okay, Mayor gave you a thumbs up. I'll let him address if he wants to respond to his comments, because we do have another council member wants to make some comments. Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Mr. Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I was, I was going to hold off this week, but I just got to announce that if anybody wants to receive the Fourth Warder newsletter, please email me at bryant. bryant.jackson@lansingmi.gov, and I'll be happy to add you to the list. It's just another opportunity, a way that we can try to connect through email and information sharing by emails, and it's been working pretty well so far. And every time I make an announcement, I get a few more people, so can't skip it this time, and I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, President Spatafor. Just a couple of things. For those who do live in the Waverly or Holt School districts, we did send out absentee ballot applications last week, so you should have gotten that by now if you're a registered voter living with your registered to vote in those school districts. So we do have a May election coming up. Also, I wanted to announce a couple of things about our marijuana licensing process. First, there is a letter to council in the packet just highlighting the fact that the state of Michigan added the city of Lansing to the social equity program. We were not recognized as part of that under the previous gubernatorial administration. So we are now under that. However, I do want to highlight that all of our cap licenses, which generally are the ones, several of the ones that have lower income threshold to get into, we have already kind of reached the caps. The only remaining license that really would be helpful is the Fourth Ward microbusiness. So I do just want to highlight that and kind of put it in council's ball court that if we want to have a discussion about that in the future, I'm definitely open to the discussion. Secondly, I wanted to let the council and members of the public know that we did determine a deadline. We have several of our businesses that were approved conditionally in the very first phase of our licensure on the medical marijuana side, which was a couple of years ago, and there are several that haven't actually met those conditions and come to licensure yet, and we did give them a deadline of the end of September to get their license or risk action being taken against their license so that we can bring them into full operation for, for a number of reasons. Jobs in the city, protecting the consumers so that there's not a unnecessarily constricted market, as well as there is a revenue impact to the city. And then the final thing that I wanted to highlight on marijuana is that we did receive revenue sharing from the state on the medical licenses of $280,000 check that was based on the number of active licenses we had in the city as of the end of the state fiscal year in 2020. So some, some good news there on that front. So thank you for your time, and that takes us to community event announcements. If there's anyone in the viewing audience that has a community event, now is the time to raise your hand, and we will give you up to a minute to tell us the details of your community event. So right now, this is just community events, and I see one hand so far, the advocates.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep, we can hear you.
Mike Lynn with Black Lives Matter Lansing, letting you all know that we are holding a People's City Council and mayoral candidate town hall this Thursday, March 11 via Zoom. People are asked to, are strongly asked to register prior. You can register your questions for the candidates through Eventbrite, which you can find on Black Lives Matter Lansing's Facebook page. Also, as of right now, we have committed Kathy Dunbar, Verge Banero, and Brian T. Jackson. And we have some declines that we will be making public here soon. So every candidate that has expressed interest and has their name in the hat has been invited to this. So March 11 at 6:00 PM. That's it. So I appreciate you all.
All right, thank you. Any other, I don't see any other hands for community events. So that takes us to speaker registration for public comment on legislative matters. Tonight legislative matters includes, we have two public hearings, as well as the ordinances for passage consented general resolutions. So any of those items, please begin raising your hand. Again, we will stop accepting raised hands once the first person finishes speaking. And while you all are raising your hands, please also listen up for the mayor's comments.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Clerk, please listen up. I like that. I have a few things to share. First, we get notification that we're passing on that, that MISHDA is making citizens eligible for $10,000 in down payment and closing cost assistance from the state. It's about 236 zip codes throughout the state. I want to say most of Lansing is included, but not all. So you're welcome to contact my office. To qualify for the program, borrowers have to complete a homebuyer education class and have less than $20,000 in liquid cash assets, according to the state. There are other limits as well on home purchase price and total household income. So council members, if you know anyone, please send them to, to our office or to our ED&amp;P office, and they can work with MISHDA to make sure to assist as necessary, in addition to many of the other programs that we already have. The Humana Medicare changes kicked in for post-65 retirees, so if anyone's hearing any questions or concerns, please let us know. Judy Keeler has been on the ball with this. I know she gave a presentation to the Ways and Means Committee, although my understanding is the video that she had didn't work. She was very disappointed because it was a really good video. But, but that has changed, and any of the reimbursements that need to be made will be made. So if anyone's hearing anything from any of our retirees, please send them to my office, send them to Judy, and we'll get them over or get them right to Humana directly. Serve Lansing will be doing a March 27 Baker Neighborhood cleanup, so if you are in the Baker neighborhood and want to help out with cleaning up, or you just want to volunteer with Serve Lansing, March 27 will be the day to do that. We are going to be announcing that we are naming our snowplows after we announced the new plow map online, which when it snows, you know where your plow is within 15 minutes. Now we'll name the snowplows, and I'm very much hoping we won't need that for the rest of this year, as it was 60-something degrees today, but it's March in Michigan, so we'll, we'll wait and see. Wanted you all to know, council members and any members of the public, we are planning to, to get to you hopefully by the next meeting, but very soon, language for renewal of the police-fire-and-roads millage. I am supportive of renewing that, renewing that. I hope you all are as well, and I want to get that to you so that, assuming council passes it, we can get that on the ballot for August. I know legal is working on that language, and I know that has come up as a question to me, maybe by a few of you, that we are getting that language and we'll get it to you, or legal will get it to you. Many of you went through this five years ago, so many of you have more experience moving this through than I do, but I am fully supportive of that millage for our police and fire department and our local roads, so we'll be getting that to you. Also, I'm sure you're all paying attention as close as I am. The federal government, the Senate has passed their American Recovery Stimulus Bill, and that is now over to the, the US House of Representatives. We're expecting a vote tomorrow. Our, our US senators were incredible, Gary Peters and Debbie Stavano, and we know Congresswoman Slotkin has been a champion for, for this legislation, and we're very much hopeful and expecting that this will pass the US House tomorrow and be signed by President Biden. So we'll, we'll keep you updated as that comes in, and we'll have our budget in two weeks, and this certainly will affect our budget numbers. So everything is, is liquid and in process until we have this finalized, and we'll have you our budget in two weeks. But that's good news that the federal government is helping out cities and counties and states throughout the nation where, where we need it due to the coronavirus pandemic and the, the financial effects. So good news, and hopefully we'll have even better news once this is signed and passed, and we'll be able to move forward. So that's what I've got, Mr. President. Thank you, everybody. Oh, Councilmember Hussein, yes, we will, we will take that on. I'll make sure to, that Mark Lawrence, who's on this call, will follow up on that, and we'll, we'll figure out the status and get moving on that. I appreciate you bringing that up, as always. I also heard from the neighbors in Churchill Downs about the two issues that I believe you referred to. So I'll keep, we'll keep in contact with you, as well as the neighbors in Churchill Downs. I know you're, you're, you're their big advocate, so we appreciate you and, and bringing that. I appreciate you bringing that to, to me and to council. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yeah, sure, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Dunbar has her hand up. There's a question.
I do, you know, I was making sure I was unmuted. One was a question on the MISHDA program. I saw that, but I couldn't, I couldn't tell whether or not it was for a first-time homebuyers only, or if anybody buying a home in the city of Lansing and those zip codes counts. Does anybody know the answer to that? That's my first.
I think it was anybody. I'll check that. I don't want to be definitive. I, I'll check that. What I wrote down was anybody, anyone buying a home in these 236 zip codes. So I think it's anyone, but you have to meet the, the, the cost qualifications. So again, it was less than $20,000 in liquid cash assets and a few other conditions, but I, I think it's anybody, but I'll check that.
Okay. All right. My second question, and I guess this is to my colleagues and to Clerk Swolpe. I have gotten some communications about signing up to speak, and that depending on how people are watching this, depending on whether they understand the methods for signing up, that they might need a little more time, and that we might get a few more participants if the cutoff was a little bit longer. So I'm wondering if we can, instead of saying until the end of the first person speaking, because they may not even take their first three minutes, can we say the six minutes or the end of the first two people speaking, whichever's longer, so that we can have the opportunity for the people who are trying to fix buttons, and, you know, how to dial in and what to press and all that kind of stuff, so that they have the time to figure that out? I don't know if that's a rule that, you know, if it's just a policy that we've always, you know, had, but, or if it needs to be codified in some way, but I'm just wondering if we could extend the period of time after announcement that people can sign up.
I'll jump in as the person who watches this. We have announced that deadline, and we have always accepted people a bit past that deadline, and that deadline also does generally include the mayor's comments, which are generally several minutes. So like at a regular council meeting, we set a timer. It's just a little bit difficult with Zoom to set a timer and have somebody be able to see a timer and watch a timer. So that's, that's why we have gone with the first speaker, because it gives them the full amount of time that the mayor is speaking, questions from council members to the mayor, as well as at least the first speaker. If they do speak less than three minutes, I specifically do give more time. So I'm open to more discussion, but that, that's been my process.
Could we make sure that we announce several times then the process for signing up the whole, I mean, when you announce it, after the mayor's comments, after the first speaker, just, or before the first speaker, just to make sure that there's enough notice for people to figure out how to sign up?
Sure. I'll announce it now. Once you stand up on a your participant panel, there's a raised hand on a phone, it is star nine. And then in addition, on a computer or handheld, in addition to the raised hand icon, you can do Alt-Y on a Windows computer or Option-Y on an Apple's computer, on an Apple computer. But, but every computer, every platform I've been on, except for a telephone, if you can find the participant screen or your own name, there is a raised hand icon somewhere on your screen if you are on any kind of a smartphone or a computer device. And.
I think that's it.
Okay. All right. So again, we will be closing comments, closing sign up after the first speaker finishes. And the first speaker is Loretta Sandaway, followed by Ellen.
Good evening. Couple of things tonight. The first thing is the rezoning for St. Casimir's for the youth center and so forth. I support that. I think that's a wonderful reuse of those buildings for the West Jolly zoning.
Loretta, can I pause you for one second? I'm sorry, I, I got waylaid, and I did not read into the record that two public hearings, and we did not have an overview from the council members. So we will go back.
Back to a letter out of Michigan.
We'll come back to Loretta in a moment, okay? Sorry about that. So the two public hearings that we have tonight are in consideration of SLU 5 of 2020, a special land use permit for 727 Sparrow Avenue to allow for a community center outreach facility and transitional housing shelter in the A Residential District. And the, the other public hearing is, is in consideration of Z 9 2020, 3534 and 3538 West Jolly Road, resuming from community plan to DM1 Residential District.
Councilmember Garza, is there anything you wish to add to those two public hearings?
No, I was just going to give the little high, high level summary, but I think you covered it. So no, I'm, I'm good.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. We're ready to resume.
Go back to Ms. Sandaway. Okay, Loretta, and then Ellen.
Am I unmuted again?
You're back.
Okay. All right. To recap, I do support the St. Casimir's changes. I think they're a wonderful reuse of those facilities. I do support the West Jolly Road zoning changes, providing, of course, that there's no tax abatements or brownfields involved. I do not support the social district drinking changes. I think we already serve alcohol in enough different places that we don't need to be adding places who typically are high-traffic family and children sites to additionally have more use of alcohol. We don't have to have alcohol everywhere we go and everything we do. I don't think that the city parks should be included in that. There needs to be a few places that people can go with kids and family and not be exposed to potentially drunken or unruly behavior. And then the last is the form-based zoning, which I oppose, as I have always opposed for several reasons, including its function, its focus is on appearance versus function, which means that we lose control to some extent of how a building is used. It could be built to look like one thing and be used for an entirely different thing. Also, there's problems with frontages and setbacks and parking, and as well with renovations, property owners lose some of their flexibility and what they can do to renovate their properties. And in particular, is a concern if there's a damaged property, like a fire or something like that, the timeline for renovations is, is too tight, especially in these days of COVID, when a lot of materials are not available, contractors are not available, et cetera. And I think the zoning districts are too rigid. But most of all, my biggest concern is that it creates too much of a homogeneous appearance. We lose a lot of variety in the styles and materials that can be used to structure new facilities. And I'll tell you what, at 422 pages, this is a bear to try and work through. It would have been very helpful, and if there's any consideration of still doing this, I think it would be extremely helpful if there was a side-by-side comparison of the changes and the impacts those changes would make, would have been a lot easier to try and evaluate this, something like that had been in place. That takes care of it for me.
Okay, thank you. Again, we are about to be stopping, accepting additional raised hands, and we are to Ellen, followed by Kathleen Edgely.
All right. Thank you very much. Ellen Gallivan, 1712 Beale Avenue. Pertaining to the sale of St. Casimir, I'd like to know if, we, we had several things that were good for the community at St. Casimir. I'd like to know if they're going to continue. First of all, St. Casimir was our polling place. Will that continue? We had, the South Side Community Kitchen had a soup luncheon, had a luncheon Mondays through Thursdays every week. Again, with COVID, of course, that temporarily stopped, but if the restrictions are lifted, would that continue? The Lansing Food Bank came once a month on Saturday afternoons for food distribution, and we had a farmer's market on Thursday afternoons from roughly May to October. And so basically, I'd like to know if the sale of St. Cas to the child and family charities proceeds, will those four things continue? That's all.
Okay, thank you. And just to note this, we don't generally get into answering questions, although they may be answered later in the meeting. Kathleen Edgely, followed by Mike Redding. Kathleen?
I just got the unmute, I'm sorry. Good evening, everybody. I just wanted to speak briefly this evening in support of the ongoing discussion and ordinance discussion taking place surrounding social districts. I believe council has received a couple letters from various property owners and business owners in the downtown district in the past, as well as some more recent letters of support. As we look at this past year, it definitely has been rough in a number of ways, and social districts are just one way that we can help our small businesses across the city recover. And I just would like to be included in others, others who like to be included in ongoing discussions surrounding social districts and where those are located in our city. Thank you, and I yield the rest of my time.
All right. Thank you. Next, we have Mike Redding, followed by David Sell. Mike, we can't hear you yet.
Is that better?
Eric, now I can hear you.
Now you can hear me. Okay, Mike Redding, Churchill Downs, here remotely from Lansing. My concern is the property rezoning on Jolly. If you look at this property and go out and take a look at it, the concerns that we have as a neighborhood group is the water that is being shed by these properties. Right now, the one next to where, to the east of where they want to put these apartments is concrete from Jolly to the fence line, and it is raised above the water table in that area, and they push all their snow off, and it goes down. And they push all their snow off and it goes down into the property is behind where the apartments are that they want to put in, which is wetland. It's trees, it's all low-lined land, and it just holds the water, the mosquitoes, all the critters that are in there involved with it. And if you add more apartments back there, they're going to drive that concrete back further and lift it higher. And it creates just such a huge low spot in here. These, the neighbors can't enjoy their backyards. We got flooding and the grass stays wet, you know, for four months out of the year and more in the later in the spring, we get late rains, but there's no water to go anywhere. We can't enjoy the backyards. Again, I said the snow gets pushed off, water flows already into the wooded area because the drain that is in the property that is on the east of that, they did put a drain in. But again, that drain is elevated probably six feet higher than it should be because it's on top of the concrete that they paved all the way to the fence line. The new build is not going to help us in that area because even if they take the fence and build up, it's still going to create a low spot for the water to go around those two parking lots, and it also comes in from the west already because that's just a low-line area to begin with. So I would strongly recommend that you guys do not allow this to be rezoned. Not unless you put some serious effort into creating some way of draining water away from there. I'm not an engineer, but I can stand in that parking lot and I can tell you what needs to be done and what was done wrong when I put it in to start with. So otherwise, you're just ruining the property values. And if it starts there, it gets to my house in two more blocks, and I'm not going to be happy about that. Thank you very much. I yield my time.
Thank you. Next, we have Dave Sell, followed by Sam Cho.
Hello, verifying that you can hear me.
Can hear you.
Excellent. David Sell, managing partner with the Exchange, the Loft of Lansing, Tin Can Downtown, Tin Can Tap Room, and other assorted entertainment venues downtown. Thanks, council, for hearing from us tonight. I'm here to voice my strong support for the social districts in the downtown area. I have, I'm also with the endorsement of our thirty staff members that we will bring back very soon, as soon as we're able to open until midnight. And in our heyday, we had about fifty employees, most of which are downtown Lansing residents. I have businesses, tin cans that I own in Kalamazoo, in Grand Rapids, and in Toledo. All three of those downtown districts have social district, social district programs there. They've been wildly successful for us in those areas. They make the downtown areas desirable, vibrant, exciting, and and to that, and more exciting than a maybe a neighboring downtown area somewhere else. So we have people walking from our venue to the stadium to catch a concert or a ballgame, et cetera. They've just been very, very good for us with very few problems. I initially envisioned we may have some sort of issues. We've seen very few of them. And they've just been very, very good for us. It's been a tough, tough year for us, bar owners. And this is just kind of one little, this is one of the things that can put us over the top. You know, there's been a lot of bars in Lansing and around the corner and restaurants that have come and gone. We have persevered. But it's been tough. This is the toughest that I remember, and I've been down here for fifteen years. So this would really help us. I did hear from one resident earlier that was concerned about alcohol everywhere and in parks and such. I can tell you that in our other districts, they're concentrated to a very small business area, centered area. I don't know of any parks in the downtown Lansing area that I think would be affected by this, and it's just been very good for us. So again, my strong support, I would avail myself at any time to answer questions for the council. Should they have any questions for a business owner that has been involved in these? I think we've been five years now in Toledo with it and a couple of years in the other venue. So I yield my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Sam Cho, followed by Marilyn Rogers.
Good evening, everyone. Just hopping on the bandwagon of people talking about the social districting and then public consumption areas, I'd like to be a proponent of it. Number one, because the punitive and taboo culture that exists in many municipal governments, statistically speaking, social psychologists say that that contributes to recidivism in alcohol. Americans have the highest rate of alcoholism in the world, and it's not because we like drinking more. It's because that it's it's seen as some sort of secret or or dirty or scary thing, right? And so I think that, you know, limited public consumption does go a long ways in undoing that stigma. I also believe that studies show that crime rates related to alcohol, related violent crime, related to intoxication, don't have significant collateral rises, right? And then the the other item that I would like to point out is it is part of the consent agenda on number four, the amendment to committee assignments. I would like to point out that it would still be a very bad idea to undo the the censure that was given to councilperson Dex for for a variety of reasons. Other council people have public outreach, they speak to their constituents, and and he has not done that. There's been one public meeting that he left.
Sam?
Yes?
Sorry to interrupt. That's actually not on this evening's agenda. There's just a resolution creating an ad hoc committee for consent tonight.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Okay, next, we have Marilyn Rogers, followed by the Michael Lynn Jr.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. Marilyn Rogers, I want to say hello to the council members and the mayor. Thank you for allowing us to address the issues of this evening. My issue of concern is the rezoning of the Z nine, twenty twenty, thirty five, thirty four, and thirty five, thirty eight, West Jolly Road. That property backs up to my backyard. The statements that have been made by Mike Redding of the Churchill Downs Neighborhood Association, I concur, I oppose. You know, I do not support the rezoning of the property for the statements that he has issued. I personally concede the property from my backyard. My backyard is not usable. The the surface water runs off, and there's literally a pond or lake for most of the seasons out of the year, and it's not usable. So again, Mike pretty much stated, I think the facts of the neighbors, my adjoining neighbors and I are the recipients of all the water runoff in the back of our backyards, and we're not happy about it. It's it's terrible not to be able to use your backyard. And so I'd just like to go on record and state that I do oppose that because it certainly makes our livelihood and our property values, as well as the livelihood of using our backyards, just impossible. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Michael Lynn Jr., followed by Abby Schwartz.
Appreciate it. I just wanted to come on and speak on a couple of the ordinance for passage today, amendment, amend chapter two forty to restructure the grant and warning process for basic human services. I'm concerned about some wording in there, and I and I'm not necessarily totally against it, and I just kind of want to go on record to these facts before it happens that I can say I told you all so. Some wording in that one, as well as the amendment to chapter six oh eight, which is the consumption of alcohol beverages and public property. Both of those issues and both of those things seem very equitable in ways and very inequitable in others. And the main reason why I believe it's very inequitable is that a lot of the onus falls on this current mayor who has had a lot of issues with transparency and backroom deals, being the final say in a lot of these issues, given the fact that Ruder Park was not included in this process of how people can rent that space in order to have an alcohol permit or a beverage permit. It to me speaks volumes that that was what that's meant for there, and it's going to be abused in the aspect that that will be allowed for the mayor to make that decision on whether or not anybody gets that. If I'm completely off-base, you tell me, but the way I read it, the mayor's the mayor's got the last word in the last say in that aspect, and as well as the chapter amendment for two forty. As I, as I recall, and as I've been told and as well I've researched, this has been in place for over thirty years, I believe it is, this the current process and was being, you know, handled possibly inequitable as well. But the new way that this was written seems to be a better process, but in the end, giving that ultimate say-so again to a mayor who's shown his propensity not to be transparent and work backdoor deals is very concerning to me. So all I would ask is that if the council's going to really consider changing these two ordinances is to take it back to some, whatever committee you take it back to and rework that wording so that these things don't fall on this corruption of a mayor that we have here. So those two things. What else do we have here? I I think ranked choice voting is up for today. I'm not positive it is, but I definitely support that. I don't know if that was on there or not. And I guess Black Lives Matter. That's all I really had to say. So thank you, guys.
Thank you. Next is Abby Schwartz, followed by Linda Appley.
Hi, Abby Schwartz. I live in Lansing, in one eighteen Shepherd Street. And I wanted to speak in support of the proposal to change the charter so that we could have ranked choice voting. I think there are
That's a referral item. So spoken about at the second portion.
Okay.
Okay, thanks. Next, we have Linda Appley, followed by Rosalind Arch.
Hello, my name is Linda Appley, and I'm going to go fast because your process is at best confusing in terms of how you get on the being able to speak. I haven't been able to do it for a number of weeks, but in the first place, I did want to say something in terms of the proposals that had originally been put forth by Mr. Jackson. And I can't go over the mall right now, but one, six fifty-six, that deals with
Those are for the second portion as well, those are not a fraction of that.
Yeah, but I don't know I'll be able to get back on on the second portion. It has been pure hell for me to try to figure this out in terms of being able to access this process. Last week, I tried to access it, was totally unable to. I don't know who in the world I don't even know if I'm on it or not on it until after the end. You don't put up the names. And please stop the clock from going because this is an issue. It really pisses me off because I took the time to try and be here on time in terms of this Zoom, and the Zoom thing is totally confusing in terms of how you access this. And no, I'm not happy with it. Now, if you can guarantee me that I will be able to get back on, then that's fine. But if you can't guarantee me, I want to continue on with what I have to say. Do you have something to say?
Ms. Appley? So it's the president's meeting.
Yeah, Ms. Appley, because we have asked folks, it would be inequitable if we allowed someone to speak on a non-agenda item at this point in time, but we will we'll work with Mr. Swolp at the end of the meeting to make sure that if your if your hand is not up, that we call on you anyway. As someone who's expressed interest in this, we did just have a discussion at the committee, the whole, about trying to bring us back to in person in some form, so people that were having challenges with Zoom were able to better access the the committee and the council meetings. I apologize that you're having trouble.
Well, I'm not happy with that response because I've been trying for about two weeks to get out and say something.
Okay, there and we can also, we also can take written comments and we can also through emails or in in writing.
I don't want to continue on discussing this, but I know you have other people. But the ability to do written comments assumes a lot of technology behind it. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you, Ms. Appley.
Our next speaker, our final speaker is Rosalind Arch.
Hi, everybody. I might be a bit too early. I'm here to speak on consent agenda item number nine.
You're in the right time.
I am. Wonderful. Okay. Well, hello, my name is Rosalind Arch. I'm the director of the Capital Area Response Effort. Thank you so much for having me. I just wanted to take a couple of minutes to talk about the CARE program and the additional grant money we are awarded by the Victim of Crime Fund this year. First, I'd like to address something that council member Woods brought up at the Ways and Means Committee last week. I thank you, council member, which was that there were some concerns among among council members that by approving the budget increase, council would be approving funds for police personnel and police programming. But I want to make really clear that that's not the case. We're really lucky to have a good relationship with the Lansing Police Department and with the five other law enforcement agencies we work with. And I say that because communities in which advocates and police have strong relationships are proven to be communities that are more effective at preventing violence and preventing homicides. But that being said, we are not the police. We're a separate advocacy organization for survivors of domestic violence. So we arrive on scene to meet with survivors after the police have arrested a suspect and left. We do not arrive wearing uniforms or badges. Our staff doesn't have backgrounds in criminal justice, and we don't come to interview the survivor about what happened that night. We're there to provide emotional support, information on victim rights, and to develop a relationship with these survivors so they don't have to go through this process alone. We have complete confidentiality with our clients. We receive referrals from LPD and other police departments, but it's not a two-way street. We don't give any information back to them unless requested by a client, and we don't pressure victims into reporting violence to police or participating in prosecution. We work to make sure that survivors understand their options and can make fully informed decisions about their own lives. We also have a relationship with Sparrow Hospital, so there are times that we're dispatched out by Sparrow to meet with survivors and who never come into contact with the police. Our services are available to any and all survivors, so anyone is welcome to call our helpline and schedule an appointment with an advocate, and they'll receive the exact same services that they would were they to be working with the police. So all of that being said, we do have other services. We help with personal protection orders, housing, safety planning. We have a free closet here with food provided by the Greater Lansing Food Bank and hygiene items and clothing, which is available to any survivor, like I said. So yeah, that being said, we worked with over a thousand clients in the year of twenty twenty, just between three full-time advocates here, which is pretty amazing. So yeah, I think this program is super special. I know this is my first time meeting a lot of you. But, you know, we're the only program in Michigan, the only city in Michigan that does what we do. And it's widely regarded to be best practice in in the world of domestic violence. So just a little bit about this money. One of the things on this amendment is to purchase a vehicle, so that vehicle would be used for our staff to, for example, drive a family of five in the middle of the night to a domestic violence shelter with their belongings. There's money on there for direct financial assistance assistance for victims to relocate relocate to safe locations and the translation of our agency materials into other languages. So thank you all so much for your time.
Thank you. Perfect timing on three minutes. We are to legislative matters and the referral of the public hearings. We have SLU five of twenty twenty.
Committee on Development and Planning.
And Z nine of twenty twenty.
Let's do the same one.
Okay. Then we are to ordinances for passage. Give me one second here. We have ordinance of the City of Lansing, Michigan to amend chapter two forty, sections two forty point zero one, two forty point zero two, two forty point zero three, two forty point zero four of the Lansing Code of Order ordinances to restructure the grant award process for basic human services. The ordinance is read a second time by its title and is on the order of immediate passage.
Councilmember Dunbar, your committee.
Thank you very much. I would like to take a moment to answer some of the questions that were raised. As I introduce this, and then council member Spada, for I'll have you talk about the changes that you've made in detail. So what this is, this is an amendment, a change to the ordinance that dictates basically our HRCS funding. And in the past, we've always had one point two five percent of the general fund budget dedicated to basic human needs and as provided by agencies in the city. One of the changes that's being proposed here is to increase that amount from one point two five to one point three five. And it doesn't look like in the documents that is, I don't even know how we would say it's not capitalized in such a way as to draw your attention to it, but that is one of the changes. And it's not really introduced in here as
Or the capitalized numbers.
You can't capitalize a number. So I'm just saying that for those who are reading it and looking at the caps as the changes document, another significant change is the one point two five became one point three five. And then also there, this was a big concern for myself when I first saw the proposal that city departments would be eligible for this funding because this has been funding that's been available to community organizations that are doing this work on the ground at the grassroots level in the community. And and so I was hesitant and I was not supportive of that change, but after having the discussion in two different committees about this and understanding there's only like one department, I believe, that's that's working, what, two departments? There's only like one department, I believe, that's, that's working, what, two departments that are working with this. Um, but it's funding that's already being used in that way, and they're trying to change the. Ordinance to actually fit what's being done in practice. So the parks department, for example, uses a very small amount. It's a couple thousand dollars of this as the co pay. For an AmeriCorps member to work over, I believe, at Baker Denora. Um, that to me is, a lot of the agencies in the public are using that money to, for the stipend. Or the co pay for their AmeriCorps. So it makes sense. It's a grassroots outreach. It's not a stopgap hole in our budget. It's. Funding something that a nonprofit would have done in the community, but there isn't one working in Baker Denora right now. So, um, that actually seemed like a legitimate use of the funding. Um, the process for that has to, they have to go through the same scoring process. If a department wants to use the funds that in any agency outside would have to use. It would still be reviewed by the, um, citizens that are on the, uh, they're appointed to the HRCS board. Um, so the review process would be the same for them as any agency. They would be competing in the same way. And I think the one thing that I will add on here, I believe there might be a mistake. Um, and if we've got Lisa Hagan, um, or Jim on the line, there is a, there's a section, uh, that talks about the, here we go. Uh, page three at the top of the document. This is, um, two forty dash or two forty oh three B. It's phrased at least one tenth of the one point three five percent. Will be allocated as described, and this is, this is what we had decided in committee. Based on, um, President Spadefor's amendment was to increase this amount and use that additional point one percent. Dedicated to address, um, to give to agencies that address root causes of racism and or promote racial equity. But by saying. One tenth of the one point three five percent, that's actually wrong. So I don't know how to rectify that in this. Um, you guys can figure out the language on that, but it's, um, it came out of law. Written at least one tenth of the one point three five, and it's really, it's one tenth.
Tenth of the general fund.
General fund budget. So however that can be fixed. Um, that would be great.
We'll need a. Lisa, if you could, uh, send an amendment in writing so we can get the, that change, we can, we can, we can bypass this and come back.
Yeah, I think if you just strike out of the one point three five percent.
Should I specify that it's general fund dollars?
Well, the funds described in section two forty.
Okay.
Sorry.
Chris is probably correct. Just to take out the, uh. Just say one tenth of the funds described.
Okay.
That, that's not what we're going for though. It's, it's one tenth of one percent of the general fund budget. So. Um, it's the addition, it's the addition between one point two five to one point three five. So I think you need to say one point one zero of the, of the GF budget.
I mean, technically it's like seven point four percent of the one point three five. But I don't want to know, I like, the math nerd in me is like, that's too wordy. And while Lisa is figuring out how to phrase that, um, Peter, would you like to, council member. Spadefor, would you like to address what that change is in there?
Sure.
Make sure we're understanding, Mr. President, that you're talking, uh, in that section. About one tenth of one percent of the general fund dollars allocated pursuant to this ordinance.
No.
No.
It's, it's one tenth of one percent of the general fund budget. So we've moved the total HRCS allocation from one point two five percent to one point three five percent. The increase in that, that one tenth of one percent increase, so. All of that money, um, shall be, at least that shall be reserved for, um, organizations and, uh. Activities that address the root causes of racism in Lansing and or promote racial equity.
Lisa, do you have that to be able to? Put that in a change to the ordinance?
Yes, I'm looking at the draft right now. I think the way to do it is just to say at least one tenth of the general fund dollars. Uh, allocated in section two forty point oh three A.
I don't think so. I think that, that over allocates, uh, because that would be. One tenth of one point three five percent. I think you need to say of the general fund.
You could also say it as the difference between one point two five and one point three five shall be dedicated to.
And then the future will confuse some scholars who are wondering why it says one point two five to begin with, but it does accomplish our task.
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay.
That's, that, that's the will of the council.
It, it's clean. It, it, it makes sense. Whatever. The, 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 the point is it's one tenth of one percent of the entire general fund. Which is the difference between one point two five percent and one point three five percent of the entire general fund.
Or you can do it that way. Either way, yeah, one tenth of the entire general.
I think Lisa's clear now what we're looking for. So we'll just need it in writing so we can, we can amend it, but. I'll walk through, I think we've, we've, we've talked about the changes in this ordinance a lot. About the, the change in process, the internal auditor being involved, the scoring matrix, the signing of conflict of interest forms, those types of things. A few changes that we made coming out of committee, um, involved. First at the top, um, of this, this, uh, item, which is page one. Um, expanding, I'm sorry, page two. Uh, expanded the definition to include addressing the root causes of racism in Lansing and or promoting racial equity. This is directly from the, um. Resolution that this body passed declaring racism a public health crisis. This is, uh, one way that we, you know, in a, in a, in a. Organization like the, like the city, you speak through your budget in terms of priorities. This is one way to say this is something that we're prioritizing in the allocation of these dollars. Um, and one of the reasons I wanted to make sure that, or the committee rather, wanted to make sure that we raised the allocation was that we didn't want to necessarily. Um, start harming other outside agencies that have been. Very beneficial for homelessness, for all that type, for all the types of activities that we've been using these dollars for in the past. So what this is, is raise the amount that is dedicated to these services by one tenth of one percent of the general fund. And then, uh, at least guarantees that organizations that, that, uh, promote racial equity and address, uh, systemic. Uh, racism in our community, get those dollars. And that means that we have to come up with them from. Uh, from the general fund and we, we, we talked about that a lot, um, in the committee. Um, which originally the proposal was a little higher, a little, a little more phased in. But this is a, uh, a compromise that we think we can, we can, it's, it's, it's a dedicated amount of revenue for, from the city budget. For those purposes. So that's the, that's the biggest change, I think. The other change that, um. That we put in was that each organization that, um, applies for these grants must certify and attest. In addition to the conflict of interest forms that they are familiar with and can adhere to the city's human rights ordinance. Um, something that was important, um, when we had discussions over the last couple of budget cycles about these, or these grants being awarded. And then, um, one thing that we, we put in there was, uh, that the internal auditor. Shall be a part of the initial review of these contracts, not may. Uh, we wanted to ensure that the city's internal auditor. Was guaranteed to be part of this process rather than just suggested to be part of this process. Um, so I think those are the, the major points, council member number, if I, if I'm not mistaken.
I think those are the major ones, and I would just say that from the math that we did based on this year's current budget. That additional point one oh percent came out to about a hundred and forty thousand dollars. So we're talking about an additional hundred and forty thousand dollars. Added to the HRCS allocation and that segregated amount, um, being recommended that at least that amount. Be used for, um. Programming that addresses, um, racial equity. And social equity. So I think, I think you've covered it. Very well. Thank you.
Thank you, councilor number. Councilor Wood has her hand up.
Um, I'm going to be asking the council to, um, recuse me, uh, from this vote. Um, the agency that I work for applies, um, for these grant dollars. Um, also, um, in applying for state and federal dollars. Um, I show that I've received, um, dollars through the city. The state and federal dollars help pay my salary. So part of getting that is showing that we're working with other agency, with other municipalities. So this does have a direct benefit on, um, my own salary. So, so I'm asking to be recused from this vote.
Okay, um. Where are we right now? We haven't even had a motion yet, correct? Okay, Lisa, I just got your amendment. You struck out the, the language about the general fund, so we can try one more time.
I mean, five minutes, I'm sorry.
It's all right. No worries. Thank you for your, for your speed on this. Um, so why don't we, we'll put pin in this one and we'll, we'll move on to the next one and we'll come back to this, if that's all right. While we wait for the amendment and then councilor Wood, we will note your, your request for recusal vote when we get to the motion and we'll just, we'll do that quickly.
Could I, I got one more thing.
Yep.
President Spadefor, um, the, none of these dollars are allocated without, uh, community engagement. And I, I want to make that clear for anybody that's new to this process who has never gone. Through it before, both myself and council member would have. Because I, my organization used to receive funding in the past, but. At the beginning of the grant cycle, there's always a community engagement with interested, um, partners who want to apply for the funds. To talk about gaps in services and what's most needed in the community at the time. Um, and, and it's, and it's an engagement. And so I, I think that there were some folks that were worried that. Um, that there wasn't a possibility for the community to sort of have a, a say in how these funds are allocated. And there is, um, at the beginning of the granting process. So I just, I wanted to let everybody know that. Thank you.
Thank you. So, uh, so we don't, uh, uh, put, uh, poor Lisa, uh, in, under too much duress. We're going to move on to the next item and then we'll come back to this and, and vote on it. So thank you, Lisa, for working quickly on that. Mr. Clerk, if we could move on to item five. But you got it. Yeah, you go.
We have an ordinance of the city of Lansing, Michigan to amend the Lansing classified ordinances by many. Chapter six, oh eight, section six, oh eight, point zero four, to allow for consumption of alcoholic beverages. On public property located in social districts, uh, set, established in conformity with state liquor control laws and at South Washington office complex. Is read a second time by its title. The ordinance was reported from the committee on city operations and is on the intermediate passage.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Okay. Go on. Okay, um, this. This ordinance is to establish the districts, that establish our ability to have the districts. Um, it doesn't necessarily establish where those districts will be. As far as the, the public use for restaurants and bars and things in, in certain areas of the town. So I wanted to make that clear. Um, that will have to come back to us. We also, um, added in here because one of the reasons that this was proposed. Uh, was one to address the need to accommodate businesses. Uh, who are losing money during this pandemic and, and create spaces for them to have outdoor seating. Um, and also it's, it's, it's a, these are great districts for promoting downtown areas in general. Um, but the other reason that we had originally looked at this and we kind of scaled back was to increase the number of venues. Um, within the city and some of them were parks. Uh, to address, uh, places that where people rent the pavilion for a wedding or they. Rent it for a family reunion or something like that, and to allow them to have alcohol, um, in those spaces. Now, we have pulled back out of that. The pavilion concept because there were justifiably so concerns. That, um, like Baker Denora Park has a pavilion. Now, it's not rented for weddings or anything like that, but the possibility. Could have existed that that would have been problematic. So we pulled that out. Um, but eventually, you know, we're going to revisit this in a different way. Um, for now, we added, this was my personal preference, uh, to put back in the SWAC. Because that has been definitely an area that we have rented out. It's not someplace that children go to. Without their parents for an event. We've had many fundraising, uh, requests for this space, uh, et cetera, that would definitely, um. Have, have gone through if we had allowed alcohol there. I would also even move to amend this, and I know that I have to do the formal introduction first, to add Francis Park back in there. Because even the folks in that neighborhood, um, recognize that that is a venue that, that especially inside the covered pavilion. Is used for many weddings and other special events that, that would benefit from having, um, an alcohol consumption there and. It's really important to point out that this is not, it doesn't just grant alcohol consumption can be done at any given time. Um, there is a permit that has to be applied for. There is insurance. There is a special event application. That has to be filled out and approved of in all, and, and in many ways, um, in order to. In order to have the alcohol at consumption in those places. So I think I've rambled around this enough, but, um. The districts are the main part, and then I would like to note that we've added the South Washington office complex. And then when I'm done with this, I want to do a friendly amendment. Uh, maybe I can't do it to myself. Announce that to add Francis back in there.
Okay, um, I, you have a motion on the table for the approval of the, um. The, the ordinance that came out of committee. Um, is there a discussion on that before we start talking about possible friend, possible amendments, excuse me? All right. So I, I will, I would like to say, I'm sorry, councilman Wood, go ahead.
Um, you know, we went through this discussion with a SWAT building, um, sometime, well. Wasn't all that long ago, um, where there was a lot of concern from the public about having. Um, alcohol at that venue. Um, I definitely support the social districts. Um, for the businesses in the community. And if that were the only thing that would be on the table, I would be supporting, uh, this ordinance, but with the SWAT. Uh, building, um, the South Washington complex as part of this. I, I won't be supporting it. And if we're talking about amendments, my amendment would be that that, that portion be removed. Um, from the ordinance.
Okay, well, um, thank you, Councilor Wood. Councilmember Hussein.
Yeah, first I want to say, um, thank you to the committee and the work, uh, that was done. Um, I thought it was a, a responsive process. There was a lot of, uh, you know, when we got, we got emails, we got calls. Um, you know, we attended neighborhood meetings virtually and, and, and got feedback on this, and there was a lot of concern regarding. Um, the, the parks and pavilions piece. Um, and there was also concern candidly, um, regarding the city facility piece, um, outside of the parks and pavilions. Um, I would, because I think it's so incredibly important, um, to move, um, this forward and to allow for the social districts, I would, um, also ask. Um, that we amend this to take out SWAC at this time. I think we can certainly move forward with a more. I don't want to say comprehensive, uh, conversation, but an additional conversation at another time regarding. Um, you know, city facilities and, and things of that nature. Uh, but our businesses, um, are, are asking for this. Um, I think, um, they've waited long enough, uh, and I, and I really think we need to move forward with the social district, uh, districting piece. Um, and so, yeah, you know, as, as an effort, um, to not see this thing fail on the floor, I would, I would really appreciate if we would, uh, amend and take that piece out.
Hey, I'm going to enforce my rules with everybody. Um, all amendments shall become in the written form. So if you've got. Um, even write down, strike line, blank, line, blank, send that to the council so that I can project it on the screen, but I'm not, uh. I'm not going to do the work for y'all. So, uh, I've here, I've heard three folks with, with suggested amendments, so we can put up this one on hold and move to. Uh, form based code. That one should be easy. Um, I see councilor Wood.
Yeah, since, um, councilmember Hussein, since you and I both have the same one, would you like to send that? One, so we're both not sending it.
Yep, I can, I can work on it.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, actually, good news. Uh, I've got the draft from Lisa, so we can go back on the agenda. Um, councilmember Dunbar, would you please withdraw your motion?
I withdraw my motion.
Thank you. Now, would you, uh, make your motion on chapter two forty?
I remake my motion on chapter two forty.
All right, Mr. Clerk, it is my understanding you've already read it for a second time, so you need not go through that reading of the title again.
Correct. I do, I do, I do not have the amendment.
I do, so I'll, I'll broadcast it.
Well, I, can you email it to me as well?
Yes, uh, Sherry, could you?
I do.
Yeah, yeah, please email the clerk the document he has to keep a record of. Okay, uh, here is the, the nuts and bolts here. At least. The difference in funds allocated at one point two five percent of general fund dollars and funds allocated at one point three five percent of general fund dollars. Described in section two forty shall be reserved for local agencies or activities that address the root causes of racism and or promote racial equity. And then the rest of it is the same. There was one change that was also added in Lisa, help me out here. This section here, we added all other city departments. That is
That one was already there. I'm sorry to interrupt. If you go up, Council President to two forty point oh three sub C.
Here.
So in prior drafts, the words to other city departments was crossed out. But that was when we were taking out all of the references to other city departments. And given the conversation that was had at committee that should have been put back in.
That was a drafting error, not a not an intentional strikeout. So I'm I asked Lisa to make that change as well, because that was the discussions of the committee and the discussions that council reflected in that change. So this change here is the substantive one. This change here is the drafting one. All right, so I'm going to move the substitute. Wait, yeah, right? Yes, I'm going to move the substitute. So I'm going to call a roll on moving the substitute, getting the substitute in front of us.
Okay.
Mr. President.
Yes, ma'am.
I've asked be recused, so I
Oh, yeah. On the adoption, I'm moving the substitute.
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. President, here's the way this works. So first of all, if there's a conflict of interest raised under the Charter requires two thirds of those serving.
Yep.
And then the if it is granted by council, then it's a majority of those that are left.
Okay.
I question whether there is a conflict of interest question right now. Because Councilmember Woods entity is not receiving direct dollars at this point. Perhaps they are based at appropriation.
No, we are. I am receiving direct dollars right now.
No, but I mean, under this ordinance, you're not.
It's the ordinance itself is you're not receiving them under this ordinance. You received them on our previous ordinance and this ordinance doesn't make any appropriations, I think, is what Mr. Smirko is
Yes.
But she has been Councilmember Wood has asked for a refusal, so we will we will call a roll on the recusal of Councilmember Wood from the vote to adopt substitute.
Okay, I'm recusing Councilmember Wood. Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatterfor.
Yes.
And Councilmember Wood, is she permitted a vote on this?
No.
No.
Councilmember Betts.
He mouthed, yes. We can't hear you, Brandon.
Councilmember Betts.
He said, yes, he's nodding yes, thumbs up, mouthing it, too.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Six years, your name is so Councilmember Wood is recused.
All right. Now vote on adopting the sub, but not yet approving this. Council Christmas show.
Okay. Councilmember Spatterfor.
Yes.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Our zone.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Six years, your name is the substitute is adopted.
Right, Councilmember Dunbar, would you like to move for passage the substitute?
I will move the substitute.
All right. All right. We need to take a Councilmember Wood, are you requesting a recusal for this vote as well?
Yes, I am.
Okay, Councilmember Wood has requested a recusal. Mr. Clerk, would you please call the role and recusing Councilmember Wood?
Councilmember.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatterfor.
Yes.
Six years, your name is Councilmember Wood is recused.
Let's cook now on the passage of the ordinance.
Okay, on passage, Councilmember Dunbar. Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatterfor.
Yes.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Six years, your name is the ordinance is adopted.
Councilmember Dunbar, would you like immediate effect?
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar has requested immediate effect, Mr. Clerk.
An immediate effect, Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilperson Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatterfor.
Yep.
Councilmember Spat Spat Bet.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Six years, your name is media effect disorder.
Thank you very much, folks. Which one was that? Oh, the interest is okay. Are you are folks ready for the social district amendment discussion?
Let's move to.
Nope, go ahead, Mr. Vice President.
I was just going to ask if we could. I am just confirming right now. I think I got it. I think we got it worked out. But if we can move to form based code, that'd be fantastic.
All right. So seven years and one hour and seventeen minutes in the making is the adoption of form based code. So Councilmember Garza, would you care to make?
Can I read first, please?
Oh, no, yeah, go for it. Seven years and eight hours.
So only your rules, change your rules. We have an ordinance of the city of Lansing, Michigan to repeal and replace the existing zoning ordinance and map being part twelve title six of Lansing classified ordinances in its entirety, except for chapter thirteen hundred marijuana operations with a form based code and zoning now.
Hey.
The ordinance is read a second time by its title and is on the order of passage.
Thank you, Councilmember Garza.
Okay, thank you, Council President. So are we going to leave this up for are we going to have any discussion prior to?
Yeah, if you just make the motion, then we can have discussions.
Okay, I will make a motion.
All right, the ordinance has been moved by Councilmember Garza. I'm going to ask, I think I think Brian McGrane is is hanging out with us tonight. Mr. McGrane, could you please address the high level overview of what this is, please? And I know that you've brought been brought in, so wait just a second. There we go.
Sorry, absolutely, Mr. Mr. Council President, and I believe I have Andy Fido with us as well. So perhaps if he could be in case there are questions, thank you for the opportunity to address you all. We are very, very excited and Mr. Spatterfor, as you noted, it has approximately seven, if not seventy years in the making for this. As you all recall, a number of years ago, Lansing adopted its first full master plan, its first fully redone master plan in a number of decades. One of the big pieces that certainly for base code, it really was the teeth to that master plan. We adopted the master plan. Lots of community input went into that. But really, it again left sort of the tool, the main piece, which is the form based code sort of on the table. But I my position, we we called form based book club. We went through these several hundred pages line by line with assistance from legal with our staff. And really, what you have before you today is, again, the implementation tool for the master master plan. So we're very excited about this opportunity. This will be transformative for the city. This is really the first way we'll be doing zoning differently in in many decades, many generations, in fact. And I think, again, this will be a really transformative tool for us to make change over with how the city lives, works, plays, breathes. Really, it's formed. So we appreciate your bringing this up tonight. We certainly ask for your support and passage, and we can take any questions if there are any.
Hey, thank you very much, Mr. McGrane. Mr. Fido is here now, I think, or no? Yeah. It's Fido. If you want to add anything, please feel free to do so now, but do not feel obligated to do so.
No, I think Mr. McGrane summed it up perfectly.
Thank you very much. Okay, any questions from members of council? Mr. Garza, represent representative, Councilmember Garza.
Thanks, Council President. I will lower my hands to no residuals. All right. So I guess my question is, with a form based code, is there going to be any negative effects to like any of our anchor businesses here in Lansing? For instance, let's say McLaren or Sparrow or any of their future developments?
Andy or Brian?
Sure, Mr. President, thank you. Yeah. So what's interesting about this again is that this is really a starting point going forward. And in fact, I believe with the documents, we we listed May first as really our transitional place. Anything that currently exists is essentially grandfathered in. This really is a change going forward. So anything May first onward would be subject to this new set of documents, this ordinance.
Okay, now is let's say, you know, developments take a long time, you know. So obviously, some some developments take, you know, a year, two years, three years, five years. Now, if there's if there's a project in place, let's say they they have the prints ready to go, they haven't broke ground yet, this form based code comes in effect. Does that possibly mean that future developments might have to scale back and start reworking their their site plan?
Typically, anything that is in progress right now, and in fact, we've discussed as staff, we don't have any awareness of anything that will be coming to us or may significant things. I mean, certainly, there are things that are out of peace. But again, May first is really our our deadline or our transitional place. Anything that comes to us prior to May first will fall under the current zoning ordinances. So if anybody is mid project, if they're bringing something to us for site plan review, anything of that nature, if it comes to us before May first, it will be under the current regime. Anything again after May first will be subject to the form based code.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yeah, I'll be brief. I was I was not going to be supportive. I'll be honest with you. We've taken a look at you know, kind of moving forward on this a few different times. And I have always kind of expressed some of my concern. And really, what I did was I channeled a lot of the concerns I heard from the community. You know, to our our administration, to our economic development and planning director. And to their into their credit, they worked hard. They worked hard to get out to the community groups. I know that even as early as last week, they were out in front of the East Side Neighbor Organization, really working to make sure that people understood what this was and what this was not. And then, you know, even if we go further back, you know, this is this has been changed a bit to reflect some of the concerns that came from the community. I have been on the the phone a few different times with Brian, have been in on a couple of different presentations with Andy so that I can better understand it and also so that I can hear from those folks that we represent. Moving forward. Again, I I think it was a responsive process, and I think what we have is a better product now. I am going to be supportive. But I did want to just express my appreciation for the work that was done. You know, particularly Brian McGrane, his shop, Andy Fidoa and the rest of the crew. So we appreciate you. I am going to be supportive. And I do believe the vast majority of the concerns that were brought forth at the myriad of meetings that we discussed this at have been addressed. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, Councilmember Wood.
Thank you, President Spatterfor. I've had a number of concerns about form based zoning since this was first brought up some time ago. I do appreciate all the work in the in the the public participation and the things that have gone into this. My concern is, is I wish that this had been done in districts and that we would have adopted this slowly and allowed to see where there might be pitfalls or issues with that. And because this is not being done that way, but it is affecting the whole city at this time, I'm not going to be supporting it. I, you know, I'm sure this is going through tonight, but I just feel that this should have been done a district at a time to see how it would work for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wood. I will just take point privilege here, and I will be supporting this tonight. And I think Brian McGrane, his shop, Andy Fidoa, everyone over the last three years who've tried to bring me up to speed on what this is and what this isn't, still not an expert. But I have a better understanding of the direction we're going and how it fits into the vision for the master plan. So I appreciate that. And I just want to thank you all for that work and effort and the involvement from so many community members and the feedback we've heard and trying to incorporate that as best you can into the product that sits before us. So with that, I will ask that the clerk please call a roll.
I'm mute.
Got to get my mouse over there first.
This is an aside, it was fifty one weeks ago, we went on Zoom. Unrelated.
Thanks for that. On the adoption of the ordinance, Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatterfor.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yeah.
Member Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Six years, one day, the ordinance is adopted.
Just to make sure I don't screw this up, zoning ordinances can't have immediate effect, correct? So we're going to move on. All right.
This is a built in effective date anyway, so.
Very good, May one.
Then that takes us back to the other ordinance that I already read into the record. I think if we're ready to go back to social districts ordinance.
Yes. So we have social district ordinance in front of us. Oh, well, not in front of us, but to be discussed tonight. Councilmember Dunbar, you had the original one in front of us. I have a amendment that I think Vice President Hussein is going to propose as a substitute to be adopted. Yes, absolutely.
To the city attorney, how many votes does this take to pass? The five? I'm assuming maybe.
Five vote.
Yeah.
Okay, so what I remember when we were in committee and I asked I asked you, Adam, if you would support this on the floor in the way that without Francis Park, but just with the SWOAC in there and you had indicated that you could. And so that being said, we have, I believe, the five votes that we need without amendment. So I would ask you to reconsider doing that amendment. Because we have the asset with block.
Can I? Can I comment very briefly?
Absolutely.
Okay, I did, right, as part of the committee, and that was on Wednesday. And what I said was, you know, as is, I could see myself supporting on the floor. However, and and I wanted to vote it out of committee so that we could have the conversation. I will tell you that, and and I do apologize, President Spatterfor, I should have had the language written up beforehand. I assume some of the concerns that we heard tonight were going to be addressed because I also engaged constituents between Wednesday and Sunday, and there are a lot of concerns that remain. And and so for that reason, I would be more comfortable supporting an amendment, or I should say an amended ordinance where we take SWOAC out. And and I would I would just appreciate the opportunity. I truly, you know, we all have our our perspectives in terms of what our positions are, particularly, you know, and from a war position, I really believe it is my job to represent those concerns and those voices that I'm hearing. And and that's what I'm trying to do. And so, again, I would be more comfortable moving forward with an amended ordinance. And I do have that ready for your consideration.
Okay, someone want to make a motion? It sounds like Mr. Vice President, you're going to make a motion to adopt the substitute.
I am. I'm going to move that we adopt the substitute that landed in your emails just a few minutes ago.
Okay, so we'll I'm just going to walk this through this real quick. This is the substitute. It looks like it strikes out and South Washington Office Complex in the title. Site strikes out sale of Washington at the South Washington Office Complex in the places where it is authorized and then continues to do so.
It's yeah, and presence metaphor, I'm sorry, I I should have I should have explained. You know, the the bulk of the language is included in those first couple of pages. And then in pages three on everywhere where you see SWOAC, S W O C for South Washington, Washington Office Complex, we've simply stricken that language.
Okay. So that's what's in front of us right now. Any discussion, Councilmember Dunbar? Looks like you want to say something.
Yeah, I'm I'm just really disheartened by this because I I understand I understand in neighborhood parks not wanting this. But we are losing a tremendous amount of potential revenue by folks not wanting to rent that space. And 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 we've had numbers. And I remember at the time that we did this, it was a couple of years ago, where we did a special one night allowance so that Firecracker Foundation could hold their fundraiser there. But we all know this, that fundraisers, weddings, special events, they want to be able to serve alcohol. And SWOC in particular is not a place where children can wander in and be exposed to it. It is locked, it is closed, it is only open to somebody who rents the space. And I am, I am frustrated that support changed on this one. And I, you know, I respect you, Adam, that you went back and talked with constituents. But I just, I don't believe, in this situation, their fear, whatever was going to happen, isn't grounded in the reality of of the that location. And so I feel like we are, we are giving money, we're taking money off the table that we could be earning in a down economy to make that space available with alcohol. And I think it's, you know, I don't know, I see a pearl clutching, oh, my God, alcohol. We did this when we, when we did the thing for celebration down there, too. You know, people not wanting alcohol in a movie theater. Well, there's a lot of people that won't go see Shrek for the fourth time unless they have a drink. But that's a different story. Anyway, I'm disappointed in this and I'm not supportive of the amendment. But I will, I will understand if that's the only way that this is going to pass tonight.
Yeah, I was just gonna mind you. Go ahead, Adam.
No, and I was just going to say, and you know, you're absolutely entitled, you know, to your opinion and position. I'm not going to try to convince you either. If the amendment is voted down, we'll, you know, we'll vote on the original that came out of committee. And we'll see where it goes. As you stated, you believe the support is there. So this might be much ado about nothing, we'll see.
Okay, I don't know if it helps council, but we did have discussions about moving city council meetings to SWOC. And it just sweetens the deal. All right, so I'm just kidding for those out there, we wouldn't obviously purchase liquor license for city council meetings, Jim wouldn't let it. So I am going to call the roll on the Hussein substitute. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
On the substitute, Councilmember Jackson.
No.
Councilmember Spatafor.
No.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Betts.
No.
Councilmember Dunbar.
No.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Three days, four days, the substitute is not adopted, which leaves us with the original committee report.
Councilmember Dunbar, would you like to make the motion on the original?
Make a motion on the original.
All right. I think we've had discussion, I'm not going to say you can't speak now, but speak now or fair hold your peace. All right, let's call the roll.
On the ordinance, Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Oh.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
I know this is going to be confusing. Let me just explain myself. I think it's that imperative, I was truly hoping that we could vote on the amendment and that we could support the social district, districting, sorry. And we could have the this, this other conversation separate. I think it's imperative enough to move forward with the social districting. And I'll reach back out to my constituents, and I will look to see if this is something I should move to amend in the future, to take SWOC out. So I will be supportive, yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Six years, one day is adopted. We need immediate effect.
Yes, I would ask for immediate effect from Councilmember Dunbar.
I move for immediate effect.
Very good, immediate effect has been asked of Mr. Clerk.
On immediate effect, Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yeah, what is it? Immediate effect, yes.
Seven years, one day, or I'm sorry, seven years, zero days, seven years, zero days. Is ordered. Takes us to the consent agenda.
All right, before we move the consent agenda, anyone wants something off the consent agenda to discuss, vote on separately, vote against? Seeing none, Mr. Vice President.
Sure, I, so on the consent agenda night, sorry, we do have several items. We first have the establishment of the ad hoc committee on audit. We do, in fact, have a grant application authorization for, this is for Michigan National Resources Trust Fund Grant. We have a grant amendment, this is victims of crime act of Boca Capital Air Response Effort Care Grant. So yeah, with that being said, I would move the consent agenda.
All right, motion's been made as a non debatable item, with the clerk please call the roll.
On the consent agenda, Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Seven years, zero days, the consent agenda is passed. We are to resolutions for action for the IFF local 421 collective bargaining agreement.
Mr. Vice President, you're up.
Sorry, briefly, this pertains to, again, this is a CBA for the local IFF 421. This is a, I'm sorry, this does include three years of wage increases. This is retroactive back to 2019. We're looking at respective raises of 2.5% and 2%. We are moving to a three year FAC or final average compensation. The multiplier would stay the same, but that will result in savings for the city. There's also a small benefit of 1% from years 25 to 30 to give some benefit for some of our senior firefighters and senior command in order to try to, you know, get them to stick around and provide some leadership for some of your younger firefighters. There is also, we, I'm sorry, we're moving to new employees or newly hired employees from retired healthcare to saving accounts. We also have a wage differential for ambulance service that will be increased. And then the time on time off schedule, we actually had a memorandum, sorry, memorandum of understanding that have been approved in the past. And so baked into this is language that reflects that that time on time off schedule so that it is actually part of the CBA. There is some language that deals with promotions instead of straight seniority. They are now looking at things such as seniority, they're looking at assessments, job performance, as well as educational background. And then also baked into this is a new position for a community resource officer. This individual, among many things, will be deeply engaged in the recruitment, hopefully of a I diverse and and as much as possible local, you know, crop of individuals to essentially onboard into the fire department. So with that being said, I would move the resolution of the collective bargaining bargaining agreement ratification.
Thank you, it's been moved and there is discussion from Councilmember Garza.
Thank you, Council President. I believe that 1% is for the junior firefighters. What you spoke on, Mr. Hussein, Councilman Hussein. But regardless, I just wanted to commend our hardworking men and women and fire department. They've been putting themselves, their lives on the line, day in, day out. They've been without an expired contract for 616 days. So I'm glad to see this contract finally ratified. And the the fire department was overwhelming supportive of this as well. So I'm looking forward to seeing this pass tonight, thank you.
Councilmember Wood.
Thank you, President Spatafor. I see in our attendees that the president of the IFF is on, and we want to thank them for the diligent work that they did in working with the administration over these long several months in order to get this contract done. So thanks, Dan.
Thank you, Councilmember Wood. I too just want to express my thanks to everybody for working hard on this. It's it's been a long time coming and then COVID hit and all the other things that they got us here. So I'm glad we can get a contract in place for the firefighters union. I think we have a motion in front of us properly and seeing no further discussion. I'll ask that the clerk please call the roll.
Okay, on ratification of the contract, Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Seven years, zero days, the contract is ratified. And we are to speaker registration for public comment on city government related matters now. And once again, most computer or smartphones, there is an icon to raise your hand. So you can raise your hand that way. On a phone, you would dial star nine. On a Windows computer, you can also hit alt Y at the same time. On an Apple computer, you can hit option Y at the same time. And again, we will stop accepting raise hands after about the first finished speaker. While folks are raising their hands, also, we will go through reports of city officers, boards and commissions.
Mr. Vice President.
Sir, I would make a motion that all items be considered as read and full and that the appropriate referrals be made by you.
Proper motion before us, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Referrals, Councilmember Garza.
Yeah, sorry.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yeah.
Councilmember Jackson. Yes, Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Seven years, zero days, referrals are ordered. We have letters from the city clerk regarding marijuana operations licensing, social equity program update.
Place down file.
Minister, boards, commissions and authorities.
Place down file.
And the determinations of the elected officers' compensation commission.
Place it on file and send it, do we need that data cow? Yes, please send that to cow two. Carol's my conscience in the left screen here.
We have letters from mayor regarding the grant application for the M. Local Bridge Program.
Ways and Means.
Transfer the Delta Grand train to the city of Lansing.
City Operations.
Two items for the, for Glenn Burn Commons.
The Operations.
And the IFF collective bargaining agreement.
Place it on file.
We have an item from Councilmember Jackson, city charter amendment ranked choice voting for city elections.
Yeah, we'll start there and see your operations.
Communications and petitions, affidavit of disclosure from Renee Freeman, HRCS Department.
The Ethics Board.
Affidavit of disclosure, David Odom, Lansing Fire Department.
The Ethics Board.
And affidavit of disclosure, Councilmember Kathy Dunbar.
And also the Ethics Board.
Communications from Scott Woods.
Place on file, oh, sorry, go ahead.
It's okay.
Place on file.
From Rachel Franklin regarding proposed ordinance objection repeals.
Equity Diversity Inclusion Committee.
And communication from Julia Kramer about defunding the police.
Place on file.
And we are to motion of excused absence.
Your motion to excuse, Councilmember Spitzley?
A moved.
To move by Vice President Hussein, is your, the clerk please call the roll.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yeah.
Councilmember Jackson. Yes, Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yeah.
Councilmember.
Yes.
Seven years, zero days, and we are to remarks by councilmembers.
President Spatafor, before you move on to remarks, the letter from Scott Woods, I believe that has to do, again, with green space for to purchase that for to add on to the park. And we've been asking that that
For the Parks Board.
Also go to the Parks Board, thank you.
I thought about that, but I didn't see one that was specifically parks. So thank you, Parks Board, too, please, Mr. Clerk. All right, councilmembers, any further comment? I do have something. So as we relates to the social districts, I know we had a little conversation about this, but the next step is establishing those social districts. And there are organizations and businesses and folks that have reached out already with ideas about places where a social district makes some sense. I would suggest that you do the same, either reach out to your ward representatives or myself or and we can start thinking about places where a social district would make some sense. Generally speaking, there must be at least two on premise distributor retailers, so bars, restaurants or venues where they serve liquor, alcohol or beer in the social district for it to qualify under state law. There are a few more qualifications, but that'll get the ball rolling for you. So just think about that and reach out to folks, particularly if you're, if you are a license holder and you're looking for that to be added. It sounds like we had a few in mind that public comment this evening, but that's the next step. And the goal is to get it, those in place and to the Liquor Control Commission before the weather turns nice to stay. I had someone tell me they're looking forward to, they're moving here in April and they're looking forward to the snow being gone. I said it's not necessarily going to be true. So we could still see that here, but the goal is to have this about time for summer. So just please to communicate with us if you have an idea about social districts. And I think that's it, just reminded the council, I'm out this week on some family time. I don't think I'm going to be missing any meetings, but just in case, as a reminder, if there's, if things go crazy, call Vice President Hussein, he's in charge. And I think that's it. So, Mr. Clerk, we are, while we prepare for the mayor's comments, just remind folks, if you want to speak at public comment, alt Y on a PC, option Y on a Mac, star nine on your telephone. And that shall get your hands raised. And then I will note that we do have one person that wants to make comment. Mr. Clerk, make sure that she is called on, she's still here.
Okay. So we're to the mayor's comments.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I also want to add thanks to the the folks in the fire department, the firefighters. It was, I'm glad we were able to come to to a final good resolution on this. I appreciate council members, all of your votes. I want to recognize Nick Tate in my office, who started the the contract discussions, and Elizabeth O'Leary, who came in and got the save. It's a baseball reference. But they did a great job, so I wanted to to thank them. Councilwoman Dunbar, you had asked about the the Mishta down payment assistance. Mark Lawrence had a chance to to find that and he emailed us both. And I looked at it and it says available to first time home buyers, but that's qualified as someone who has not owned a home in the previous three years. So first time home buyer is in essence, someone who hasn't owned in the last three years. I don't know that it's really first time, but that's what it says on the Mishta website. So I hope that that at least gets you your answer. And Mark sent us both the the link, so you can take a look at that and review that. So it should have the answers to your questions. The only other thing I want to add is Kathleen Edgar leaving on reminded me, I hope everyone had a chance to come to Winterfest. It was incredible. There were a lot of people downtown socially distanced. We had ice skating, we had ice sculptures, we had all kinds of fun. It was a really great activity. I don't think Kathleen's still here, but I do want to congratulate DLI and and I hope everybody had a really good time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we're to public comment on city government related matters. That's related to the operation of the city of Lansing. And again, raise your hand by alt Y on Windows, option Y on Apple, star nine on a phone, or if you have an icon that says raise hand, you can use that as well. And we will start, we will cut off signing up after the first speaker. We have Verisha Kelly followed by Linda Eppen.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Hi, my hand was raised initially regarding the rezoning of the property. Hi, my hand was raised initially regarding the rezoning of the property on Jolly. West Jolly Road, the Z nine twenty twenty at three five three four and three five three eight West Jolly Road. I'm very opposed to that. My home sits directly behind that unit that's early established. And there is drainage from that unit unto the back of my property. I'm concerned about the value of my property. I'm concerned about any damage that may happen with my garage. I do have a garage that a two car garage has been built and is close to that area. So I just want to voice my opinion that I am against that person being allowed to build another unit. The drainage is terrible back there in the summertime. And I would suggest that he finds somewhere else to build. That's not fair for us property owners to have to deal with that. And my question also, a question that I do have, was that approved through the city? The type of drainage that he did set up on that property for that complex?
This is your time to speak, ma'am.
I am speaking. You can't hear me?
Yes, yes.
Ma'am, the clerk was referring that the city council doesn't typically respond to public comment. This is your opportunity to address us and we listen.
Okay, I just, did you just hear me? I just spoke.
Yes, we did. Yeah, you 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 asked a question and we didn't want to.
Oh, I see. I understand. Okay, okay, okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Linda Applin followed by Ash.
Hello, for the record, my name is Linda Applin. And due to time constraints, I'm only going to respond to two of the issues. Two of the proposals put forth by Councilman Jackson. One is in terms of the closed parks and that six fifty six oh five, I think it is. But I am aware of the letter that Rachel has responded to this and I am in full agreement with her assessment regarding that particular matter. I would also point out that the overwhelming majority of people in Leno agree with her. Additionally, I'd like to point out that there has already been one death of a child due to drowning in that particular in the Grand River. And furthermore, not only that death, but there has been vandalism and property damage with the torched observation platform stairs and dock at Fulton Park. They have burned to the ground. It has not yet been replaced. I think that his proposal would nearly make the situation worse in relationship to that. Additionally, in the spring and summer and fall months, the and the playing on the basketball courts, it becomes very noisy. I would also like to respond to his request in terms of six nine six oh two in terms of the repeal of, and that deals with guns. Repeal of this ordinance is absurd. But in the past year, a plot to kidnap and kill our governor came to light. Two, we witnessed our men on the steps of our Capitol. These people were had various types of guns, machine guns and et cetera. And three, an insurrection against the legitimate government occurred on January sixth, twenty twenty one of this year. In no way should we forego our ability to control where firearms can be seen. I can only assume if council seriously considers this particular proposal, that city council will allow guns and other weapons into council meetings. In relationship to that, the other thing I would like to say, and this goes to our mayor, I'm extremely disappointed in terms of the information given on COVID regarding Eaton County. And there is virtually nothing out there in terms of the boards that you have. And the other thing I'd like to say is terms of Councilman Jackson, somebody mentioned your kids. Hey, I think they're cute. And I don't see why you don't have them there. Even I don't agree with your proposals. And that's it.
Thank you. Next, we have Ash followed by.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm speaking today to demand a vote of no confidence for Andy Shore. To man that you, Councilmember Bets, resign. To demand a hearing on the Lansing Police Department murder of Anthony Hewon and the brutality committed by those in the department. To demand you shut down the jail and support the resolution to defund the police. To demand that the council do something to force the police officers to wear their masks. And to demand that you help Lansing resident Tammy Rose. So even if no confidence vote wouldn't remove Shore, I would signal to the people of the city that this council cares about those he's harmed and may harm in the future. I've said this before and I refuse to allow you to forget. Andy wouldn't dignify with interaction the protesting city employees and retirees whose healthcare he stole, but he felt comfortable enough to interact with white supremacists and militia men on the day of the presidential inauguration, calling them peaceful. He refused to give city employees a dignity he afforded to white supremacists. Brandon Bets, resign. You can't just come back and act like nothing happened. You are not fit for office. Your comments to Mike Lynn were disturbing, hostile, unhinged and unbefitting of a leader. With rancor, you slashed away at the ties to the movement for black liberation that you had built. And for what reason? Your own feelings of supremacy, though I'm sure you no longer believe in the reality of pervasive white supremacy since you've acknowledging, sorry, since acknowledging this reality is apparently no longer convenient for you. You accuse Mister Lynn of not only trying to fight you physically, but of potentially shooting you. You accuse the black male constituent of potentially shooting you. Again, you accuse a black man of wanting to shoot you. What a way to betray to the public your minds anti-black internal workings. What malice, absolute bile, resign. Disappointing leaders who call whites from this peaceful and who harass back activists are only part of Lansing problems, Lansing's problems. Once again, the coroner ruled Anthony Hewon's death a murder, then officials lied to the people about that for about half a year. Anthony Hewon's murderers are still working in that jail. Known murderers not only kept their job, they face no legal punishment for what they did. The police brutality on Baker Street happened because you allow murderers to keep their jobs and that makes it clear to their peers that the tactics they use can be continually used without punishment. Those abusive cops have been let, sorry, those abusive cops have been given a paid vacation and were let off the hook for what they did. It is devastating to know that these brutal acts will be repeated by Lansing Police again and again and again and again and again and again, because you're not doing anything about it. Do something. And not only should the murderers of Anthony Hewon be hired and held accountable for what they did, for what the murder that they committed, the jail itself needs to be shut down. Lansing does not need a city jail. You could do something about this if you actually cared enough to take action. And do something about the officers not wearing their masks, too. I'm not going to get into all of that right now, but it's just ridiculous. You let them enforce that and they're not doing it themselves. And additionally, what the city is doing to Tammy Rose is disgusting and you should feel ashamed to be a part of the city government that is doing this. Address the city stalling of her paperwork to run out the statute of limitations and help her. And don't get rid of Zoom public speaking when you add back in in-person speaking. Add back the in-person and speaking because that makes meetings more accessible. But don't get rid of electronic means of speaking up because that would make those meetings inaccessible to those of us that are taking every precaution during this pandemic that is possible. That would look a lot like suppression. So yeah, Brandon Bets resign, resign. Why are you still here? We need somebody else. Resign.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Laura Stanway followed by Max.
Hello, I also want to address Brandon Bets. And to my knowledge, I've seen or heard no public apology from him as yet. I want to remind him as well as the council members of his prior actions. I think the first thing was when he confronted Sandy Zirkle and made comments that were ageist and biased and actionable, I believe, in terms of discrimination. Second was his encouragement for people to riot against the city and the police, which I believe constituted a violation of his oath of office. And then his confrontation with council members Pitsley, which was very confrontational and racist. In all those three cases, he was given grace. And I think that he stretched his limit there with his move to communicate the way he did with Michael Lynn. He has shown a strong pattern of poor judgment. The constitution of his conversation with Michael Lynn on Facebook was egregious and unexcusable and constituted cyberbullying. And I think a violation of the ethics ordinance. So it is past time for Mike, for Brandon Bets to do as he has been requested by many groups, his ward members, citizens and his own prior supporters and resign.
Thank you. Next, we have Max Donovan followed by Sam Cho.
Hi there, I'm Max Donovan. I've called Lansing my home for eleven years now, going on eleven. But you guys know me and know that. I'm here to talk about ranked choice voting, but I I would like to to open to to say Black Lives Matter. And we need justice for Anthony Hewon. It's incredibly easy to call out racism when it is mean words from people around you, but it means nothing unless you're willing to act on the explicit and direct acts of violence that are committed against black people in the city of Lansing today. You have the power to do that. We need you to do that. And every moment that you don't is disgraceful. With that said, I I would like to move to what I came here to talk about, which is ranked choice voting. I've spoken to you guys a few times before on this matter. You know that it's important to me. I know that you've received a number of emails on the subject from folks who live in Lansing and folks who have family in Lansing. I believe we had constituents from every one of your wards who sent emails in. This is something that has been used not just across the country, not just in Maine, not just in Utah, not just in dozens of cities around America, but right here in Michigan, East Point used ranked choice voting in the pursuit of justice to to create a a more representative and more democratic council. And they saw some success with that. We we are not the only city looking at this. I've been asked to to draft language for East Lansing. The same as I drafted drafted the language that became the 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 bill that you guys have available to consider now. Ann Arbor is considering a charter amendment themselves. We have one chance to lead and time is running out to do so. It is so critically important that in this time of of doubt in our democratic systems and of of skepticism of the mechanisms by which we vote, that new technologies that that bring more people in, that make our political systems more civil and encourage collaboration between electeds is is what we do. And that's that is what ranked choice voting accomplishes. I I'll I'll be here to speak on it every month and I'll continue to blow up your emails until we get a vote. Because that is all that we are asking for is is the opportunity for folks here in Lansing to vote. We we just want a chance to to have our say on on whether or not the charter should reflect this. While while you may have your individual opinions about RCV yourselves, I I don't think any of you should disagree with with the right of Lansing citizens to have a say on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Sam Cho followed by Michigan Poor People's Campaign, which I think is Tobias.
It is. Good evening, everyone. I want to start off by saying that Lansing is not as big of a community as we might all want or think that it is. Kathy and Carol here in city council and Andy and Peter in other instances have been my representation at various levels of government or in the school board since I was a wee lad. And so I I think it's important to lean into these connections, to lean into this this intimacy that that we have with one another. I I I think that the in general, when it comes to public comment, the level of detachment and body language that that happens across the screen is a little bit disconcerting. But more importantly, I'm really happy to be able to address Councilperson Bets directly. Last time anyone saw him in a group was February twenty eighth and he had a speech prepared. And the speech was condescending. It was full of partial truths. And it ended with Bets leaving the Zoom call without answering questions or listening to constituents that wanted to speak to him after it was made clear that people wanted to speak to him and ask him questions. I think this is the height of arrogance. It's the height of demagoguery and it's coming from a man that is literally too insolent to try better. This is not a partisan issue. Brandon is simply acting undemocratically and hiding from communication to and with the people of Lansing that got him elected. He's only here for the seat and the paycheck. He doesn't want the bylaw, the bylaw process of forfeiture to happen. I'd be hard pressed to find a section of individuals or other actors that have any good faith in interacting with Bets because constituents see him for what he is, a coward. He's a thief of tax dollars for a job that he hasn't been doing. And he's a losing bet. Anyone, any group with any desire to be successful in policy change in Lansing knows that Brandon is no longer a viable path. And because of this, Brandon cannot do the bare requirements of his job as city councilperson. Councilmember Spitzley said that he's lost public trust, and I think that's a great quote. Because of this lack of trust and the absolute paltry efforts to regain any of it and the act of censure by this body, he's incapable of functioning in government. But the bylaws allow him to scrape and eek pass and allow him to continue theft of tax dollars so long as he appears in Zoom calls and turns off his camera for half of it. That's unacceptable. I would expect one of the other members of this body to be exploring another legal avenue to force a dead horse out of the zoo. So that Lansing's constituents have a viable participatory, participatory option in democracy. And I understand that it's a partisan politics issue. People are worried that it could shift the Republican Democratic sway of of the city government. But firstly, Lansing residents of the first ward would probably demand representation on their terms and not on political terms. And secondly, Councilperson Bets has a majority of his, for the majority of his life has worked with Republicans. So the democratic contingent of council has nothing to fear except perhaps a replacement that is more honest with themselves and with others about their auspices. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Tobias Webb.
Yep, Metro Lansing Poor People's Campaign represent Tobias Webb here once again. I I want to add on to what Sam said about public comment and the lack of you know, accountability for y'all actually hearing what the public has to say. There hasn't been an avenue to hold you guys to answer any questions in a long time, and it's just getting increasingly frustrating. As well as the fact that here we are, the first public comment where we can really talk about the issues in Lansing pertaining to us isn't until nine o'clock, sometimes as late as eleven o'clock every other Monday. So that's that's frustrating for the Poor People's Campaign who wants to show up and wants to improve the city and be a part of a, you know, collaborative movement to make the city better. I don't want to have to come on here every other week with a bunch of vitriol for each and every one of you. But you know, I do as long as you aren't hearing us and you're not moving forward on some of the things we're coming to you with. The the porter, the people living in the porter apartments are still dealing with those same issues, the bedbugs and stuff. And I'm seeing the pictures of that. Pastor DJ Knox is seeing the pictures of that and and, you know, dealing with some of the secondhand trauma of seeing all these issues, the the rats and 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 being the people on the ground, interacting with people that are being left behind by the city. So yeah, some something needs to be done with that. Your inspectors are not doing their job adequately. Whatever code they're adhering to is not stringent enough to keep the people of Lansing safe. The other thing is police need to be made more accountable in some tangible way. Our commissioners shouldn't be just beholden to Andy Shore. I can't say how many times I've come on here to ask you guys to get between Andy Shore, who is who has proven to be to to act in white supremacist ways within our city. And the the police commissioners are are just reporting to him. They should be beholden to the communities of Lansing. The city jail should not be existent anymore. It's not been necessary. The murder of Anthony Hewon, I've come to you guys about this and gotten nothing back. Again, I don't want to have to come to then be mad at y'all. I will, you know, Brandon Bets, you gots to go. I'm I'm definitely mad at you. I haven't seen you in a long time. I'm not not happy that you're here. But yeah, so do better, y'all.
Thank you. Next, we have Kelsey Brienne followed by Ethan Schmidt.
Hey, everyone, can you hear me?
Yes.
Sorry, one second. I didn't hear my name called earlier, so apologize. Hello, I'm speaking tonight as a citizen of Lansing and a woman of God with a calling on my life to be an advocate. I want to speak of the censure of Councilmember Bets. The actions and inactions of Councilmember Brandon Bets really concern me. As a survivor of emotional abuse, I'm sorry, just one second, a server of emotional abuse, I recognize the clear signs of abuse in his text exchange with Mike Flynn Jr. And the statements and excuses he has made are nothing short of abuse. So the sheer amount of gaslighting he uses to cover his tracks is an example of white privilege and overt racism that he claims to rail against. Performative activism is something advocates fear the most. Most of us who are fellow advocates make public comments often say, after our comments, that we are left shaking. I am shaking tonight, but I feel more empowered to speak my story and hope that you all listen to learn that Bets has shown that he should not be trusted or given power to make decisions because he's not safe and needs to do the internal work to get help, magic himself. And in my opinion, that needs to happen when he is not in a position of power. And to every survivor of abuse who is listening right now, that if this kind of language is ever used against you, it was never deserved. You're worthy of boundaries and support. All that being said, Black Lives Matter, wear a mask, defund and divest the police, especially now seeing that they stick the dog on a man who is laying on his back and never presented a threat whatsoever November 13th of 2020, the quit of the officers who beat a man on Baker Street, and my friend videoed that and now has PTSD. Justice for Anthony Heulon, his family, who has fought tirelessly to get answers of vote of no confidence in Andy Shore. See the door, read the room, time for Bets and Shore resign. And happy International Women's Day. That's it.
Thank you. Next, we have Ethan Schmidt, followed by Joe Darby.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. I want to point out something that has not been brought up yet, which was yet another extremely disturbing post by the police department, this time expressing support for the Thin Blue Line, which anybody who's paying attention will know is an extremely racist movement and a movement that has been around some of the worst actions across the country. I refuse to believe that the police department did not know what it was doing and that the police department does not know how fraught the symbolism is behind that work. The police department has continually been under fire for its policies, so you can't tell me that somebody isn't watching what they do and what they post. And I think the reason that they continue to be so cavalier about these actions is because they don't hear anything from the people who are in charge. They don't hear any sort of accountability, and the message is pretty clear. I mean, I can talk about Anthony Heulon, but it's been brought up many times. We can bring up how Darryl Green has essentially kicked Michael Lynn out despite having reasons that I don't think were remotely acceptable to do so. But that's also been brought up, but I think the fact that they just continue to post again, they just posted what is objectively racist, you know, racist symbolism, and again, there's nothing done about it, and they'll continue to do so. And I want to warn you that this does not get better. This has not gotten better at all, and I encourage you to step in before it continues to get worse because I'm definitely concerned that the police continues to act like this and that there continues to be a complete silence from those supposed to be holding them accountable. Thank you for allowing me to speak today.
Thank you. Next, we have Joe Darby, followed by Michael Lynn Jr. Joe. You're muted.
Kill.
Joe, we can't hear you. You have to hit unmute if you're speaking.
I pushed the Ask to unmute button, but I spoke, Joe walked away.
Well, we will see if we come back. All right, well, let's move on to Michael Lynn Jr., followed by Erica Lynn.
He just re-raised his hand, so I don't know. He must be trying. I can leave him in the capability and then bring him back.
Great. Yep, thanks.
Thank you for allowing me to speak for about the umpteen time over the last year. I want to bring up a couple of points that I think are important. First of all, with the redistricting of the drinking ordinance or whatever the case is, my concern is the equitable way that you all will present and allow people to use those permits. That's really my only concern. I don't have a problem with you guys allowing people to drink in public parks or wherever you do, as long as it's going to be equitable. Meaning, you know, I may want to bring the South Side downtown to Rotary Park, and it better be available for us and not locked out for the whole year if you guys are going to be allowing people to drink there. If the city of Lansing, or you guys are going to be letting that club do it down there, then you better let us come down there too. So that's really my only concern with that. Aside of that, this pandemic is allowing for what is a byproduct of this, your guys' lack of transparency is basically bad customer service. Open the city up, like plainly. Every other city across the country has found a way to do in-person city council meetings, and I can't understand for the life of me outside of the fact that we have a coward for a mayor, why we can't open this city up and allow us to have some sort of way to get in front of you all and you to get in front of us. Now, Black Lives Matter has expressed that they want to have open forums for incumbents as well as incoming personnel who are wanting to be on city council and run for mayor. And I can pretty much, I can pretty much predict that the ones who are nervous about having to get in front of anybody are going to continue to have work engagements and out of town. It won't be acceptable. There'll be one every month until November. We're working, looking to partner with other organizations. You will not be able to hide out from speaking to the people. Again, open the city up, man, plain and simple. And you shouldn't have a problem with that. You got both your shots. What you concerned about? I believe it was 200 city employees that got their shots illegally. Outside of that, the Thin Blue Line issue again with the police department, we all know that the inmates are controlling that down there, and by inmates, I mean the police officers that killed Anthony Heulon. So we understand whoever's got access to y'all's social media at Lansing Police Department answers to no one. That's obvious. It's dangerous, and you guys don't understand that this city can and will erupt. I know you all keep thinking that you're gentrifying neighborhoods and all of the money you're putting into bars and so on and so forth is making the people of this city happy, but unfortunately, the people who are struggling and have fires on their backs and keep screaming and screaming and screaming that there's an issue here will rise up. This spring, this summer, this year is going to be amazing. It's going to be fun watching this take place. It's fun organizing, and I'm in some rooms right now to make sure that you guys do not be able to continue this hurt.
Thank you. Next is Erica Lynn, followed by Amanda Thomas Show.
Make sure you let them know about Andy's subject.
Erica.
Oh, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Before my time starts, I'd like to ask for permission to speak on a community event that I did not get. It wasn't approved until about eight o'clock.
You can include that.
Perfect. Thank you. So on Saturday, March 20th, the Ingle County Health Department will be holding a pop-up COVID-19 vaccination clinic at the Village Lansing at Saturday, March 20th, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. This is going to be for people age 50 and over with certain health conditions, people age 60 and up who live in Ingle County in the zip codes of 48911, 48910, 48912, 48906, 1733, and 15. Eligible residents can schedule appointments with the Ingle County Health Department. The Village will be a site with appointment times on there, so that will be available tomorrow. You can contact Mindy Smith at the Ingle County Health Department. You can also go on the Ingle County Health Department's site, also the Village Lansing's website at www.villagelancing.org, or our Facebook page. That information will be on there tomorrow. So again, it is a COVID-19 vaccination pop-up clinic on Saturday, March 20th, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And then just let me know when my timer started.
Go ahead. Yes.
Perfect. Thank you. So I just wanted to talk a little bit about, as we enter into the election season, I just want to first start off and give a brief thank you to Councilmembers Dunbar and Jackson for actually committing to the Black Lives Matter at Lansing Town Hall. Also, ex-mayor candidate Burge Benaro has committed as well. This is that I cannot express how vital of a community conversation that this is, that all candidates should want to have with the community. Can't fathom for the life of me why anyone would not want the opportunity to have that except for the lack of transparency that we've been seeing a lot of for the past couple of years. I appreciate the very correct and warranted assumption from the committed candidates. They are confident that these conversations can take place in a fair and professional way because they clearly understand and they value that even through discord and accountability, we can all separate that and still have those very much needed conversations. So again, those are going to be ongoing, and I think that's an expectation from the people that all candidates attend. Why wouldn't they? I also wanted to move into the fact that Black Lives still matter. The silence from this body has not gone unnoticed on matters specifically related to racial discrimination, retaliation. I long for the days where I can enjoy my city again and enjoy the winter fest, Mayor Propagandy. That would be great. I really would love for us to all be able to enjoy our city like we once could, but I cannot leave people behind. And that is what your administration is doing. And again, the silence from this body has not gone unnoticed. I don't expect pending litigation. I don't accept pending litigation as an excuse. I don't think any of us anymore is doing so. It's not an excuse. You can take the people out of public statements, out of council discussions, council questions. Hey, closed conversations if you need to, investigations, and you can simply focus on the issues. Like I've said over and over, where there is a will, there is absolutely a way, and we are seeing no will in any way, shape, or form from any of you on any of these issues. We just simply aren't. We are seeing the election season coming. We're seeing you come out on the things that I think maybe you think will benefit you or look good on a platform, maybe. But again, we're talking about the people. I also want to point out that Councilmember Bets' return isn't unnoticed for me, obviously. It's not even perplexing to me. What it is to me is privilege and entitlement embodied, and it's physical representation of when the city wants you gone, they will spend the time and effort and resources to do so and make it happen. And they will give grace that's not afforded to people of color and particularly black men, such as my husband. We are not going away, especially when lives are at stake, and we're not here for political games anymore, and we will not be placed on file any longer.
Thank you. Next, we have Amanda Thomas Show, followed by Rachel Franklin.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
So I guess I just wanted to take the opportunity to ask everybody on city council to just reconsider your priorities moving forward. Like, maybe we've made mistakes in the past, but right now, we can change, like, from now on. I really think that one of those priorities that we need to reconsider and maybe spend more time on is accessibility. I really do appreciate the captions. I love that energy. I hope we can carry that same energy into further discussions, like revisit how long we have to raise our hand to speak, think about making the agenda easier to understand so that everyone can participate in government. It's really long, and there's a lot of jargon in there that's difficult, and it'd be awesome if it was more accessible. I heard other good ideas, like keeping Zoom a part of meetings. I think that would be really awesome, just always to have that as an option. And I heard about reconsidering meeting times. I think that's a really good idea, too. I think it's just really important for us to be able to talk with you all and like actually feel like we're being heard. And it's not, right now, it feels a lot like you don't want to hear from us, you don't want to give us an opportunity to speak, you don't really care what we have to say, and so you're making it as difficult as possible to participate. So whether or not that's how you actually feel, I just like, I ask you to consider how you make yourself accessible to the community, how that might make your community members feel. I also find it really confusing that we're spending all this time talking about where we're going to let people pay to drink outside when we're really, literally like displacing and arresting Lansing folks for doing the exact same thing right now. I fear that the same people will continue to be punished for their behavior. Well, whoever's buddy-buddy enough with the mayor or like has enough money to rent out places, they'll get to drink in the park for free, and then we're going to just, I just think that it's, I just worry about the priorities again. Also, speaking of priorities, how has, how, how has it not been on a single agenda to talk about literally just like Black Lives Matter, the way that Mike Lynn's been treated, the way that Brandon?
Thank you. Thank you. Next, we have Rachel Franklin, followed by Amanda Thomas Show.
Thank you. This is, I'm sorry, this is Rochelle Franklin.
Rochelle.
And I'm just following up on a letter that I sent to the city council regarding a couple of ordinances that were on the list to repeal. I just wanted to just point out that I think it's wrong to paint with a broad brush to allow parks, to allow parks to be open during the night. That's ordinance 656.05. Parks include bikes and bike and walking trails, and consideration needs to be given to property owners that own property that is adjacent to those trails and parks. Property owners are concerned about activity during the day, but at least you can see what's going on during the day. To add the worry of people lurking right outside my property at night is very concerning. Already, there's no consideration for maintenance and safety in the park right now. People are setting fires. There are not supposed to be any fires in the parks and woods. Littering is out of control. People walking large dogs that are unleashed and just noise. At night, that would be even worse. I wouldn't feel comfortable enjoying time in my backyard at night. During the pandemic, with little else to do, that was one of the pleasures that my husband and I enjoyed, sitting out in on our deck at night. Again, just to repeat, my property is adjacent to the woods. And again, the possibility of people lurking in the dark would definitely diminish any feeling of safety that I have for being on my own property. The other ordinance carrying weapons in public places kind of goes hand in hand with this and my feeling of being concerned about safety. The increase of gun violence in our city is very concerning. I see posts on social media on a regular basis about gunfire heard in my neighborhood. This is getting worse. Imagine someone in the woods shooting. More focus should be given to controlling crime, not repealing ordinances that could possibly increase crime. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Suzanne Vanderpij, followed by Joe Darby. Suzanne.
Hi, hello. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. My name is Suzanne Vanderpij, and I'm just calling in support of ranked choice voting. I think ranked choice voting is just a really simple upgrade to the way that we already vote. It gives voters more choices. It eliminates wasted votes and spoiler candidates. It increases the number of women and minorities who run and win races, and it increases voter turnout and satisfaction. I think it's a necessary step toward more fair elections and a more representative government. And that's all that I have to say, just supporting ranked choice voting.
Great, thank you. Great, thank you. Uh, next we have Joe Darby followed by Hugh McNichol.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you now.
Ah, sorry about the technical difficulties. Uh, Mayor Andy Shore, city uh council members. The subject matter that I would like to bring to your immediate attention is Woodbridge Manor Apartments on Edgewood Boulevard in Lansing. As I said, my name is Joseph Darby. I have called Woodbridge Manor my home for the past nine years. Woodbridge is managed by Princeton Management Corporation. It is my opinion, along with others, long-term residents, that Woodbridge is being grossly mismanaged by Princeton Management. The analogy that best describes Princeton Management is the, the wolf guarding the sheep. Woodbridge has two hundred and eighty-eight apartments and has twenty-one acres of property. Woodbridge is bordered on the east side of the property by Applebee's and Goodwill Plaza. On February the twenty-eighth, my car was vandalized while parked in my carport. The converter was stolen, completely removed from my car. While I am aware of many cars being vandalized on the south side of town, I do however, hold responsible Princeton Management for creating the environment that would allow the vandalism to occur. A brief summary, summary of the examples of mismanagement are backdating leasing documents, some hallway lights out for months, rented carports with little to no lights, abandoned cars for over two years or more in the parking lot, trees down along the north side of the property that have been down for four years. Uh, trash dumpsters, trash, trash dumpsters that are often overflowing with trash, mattresses, couches, uh, tables, chairs, uh, inundation of skunks, raccoons, rabbits and other animals. Large furniture items abandoned in the hallways for two to three months. Old furnaces, I have a one from nineteen seventy-four that have worn wires and leaking in the furnace. One of the neighbors furnishing in her apartment, when it turns on, it sounds like a jet plane taking off. Uh, large cracks, potholes and stairs leading to some buildings and in the parking lot. Many of our residents are physically handicapped and severely mentally handicapped, the most vulnerable population. These residents cannot and will not speak up for themselves. They simply do not know how. I have over one hundred photos that document the mismanagement and a paper trail that documents our efforts to bring concerns to Princeton Management. It is important to note, the resident manager is Brian Babcock. In addition to being the manager, he is also the Regional Mechanical Director for Princeton Management Corporation. All complaints that are directed to Princeton Management from this region go directly to Mr. Babcock. Therefore, no complaints, no matter how small or large gets passed.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Your, your time's up, so thank you. If you can just finish your sentence.
Me? Okay. We truly request your intervention with dealing with Princeton manager, management. It is not an overstatement when I say the Princeton management is following closely to the management style that plagued the life of Riley Mobile Home Park that fell in such disrepair that became necessary for the city of Lansing to condemn, close and relocate.
Okay.
We need your help. We need your help. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Um, and then we have Hugh McNichol and Abby Schwartz had her hand up in the previous session. And so I think, okay, Hugh McNichol and then Abby Schwartz.
Also, uh, Hugh, Mr. McNichol's using an older version of Zoom. I have to make him a panelist.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Hugh McNichol the fourth. I live and work in South Lansing. I want to commend Councilmember Jackson for introducing the proposal to amend our city charter to adopt ranked choice voting. For anybody that doesn't know, our city clerk estimates that switching to ranked choice voting could save our city a hundred thousand dollars every election cycle. I understand that's not enough money to solve all of our city's problems, nor is it the number one reason why we should adopt ranked choice voting. But that money could be used to fill budget shortfalls or used to maintain existing social services that would otherwise be at risk for cuts. A hundred thousand could mean somebody's job or prevent further cuts to retiree benefits. The cost savings isn't the only reason that I advocate for RCV though. In fact, I wouldn't even rank it in my top three lists of reasons. When voters are allowed to rank their candidates, we can save the time and cost of unnecessary additional election, which allows us to eliminate the terrible voter turnout problem that we experience every local primary season. Another one of the many problems that RCV solves is strategic voting, where some people don't feel like they're able to vote their conscience. We already have Lansing voters talking about having to vote for a candidate they're ashamed of because they don't think that a candidate who they like more has a chance of beating the candidate who they fear most. RCV fixes this problem and empowers voters by letting everyone rank their preferences. In short, RCV is better, faster, cheaper. I encourage everyone to research ranked choice voting and work to let voters decide this November if Lansing is ready for ranked choice voting. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And finally, we have Abby Schwartz.
Thank you. Um, I'm also, I wanted to talk in support of ranked choice or adding the proposal to change the charter to, you know, to include ranked choice voting. I think it's really important that um that the council put it on the ballot so that the citizens of the Lansing can vote on it. I think um, as, as it's been said before, it allows people to vote their heart. They can vote for who they really want and not worry about getting somebody they really don't want in, in exchange. And um, I think because it eliminates the primary, it, it gets people more engaged and more involved because everybody knows that there's an election in November and they show up. And we, we see the difference in turnout between a primary and a, and a, and a November election. And everybody should be involved in our elections and with ranked choice voting, they all can be. Um, and I think because they get there to, to choose who they want, it might encourage even higher turnout. So I think it's an important option that we should have the chance to vote on and then hopefully then it's our job to educate people about it, uh, not your job. Thanks. Bye.
All right. So our final speaker tonight.
All right. Well, at nine thirty-eight, I want to thank everyone for their participation in this evening's meeting. We are adjourned.